It's.
Are you ready, Jeremy? Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting for Tuesday, October 27th to order roll call, please.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Kabaki.
Here.
Trustee Fluki.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please always remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I need action on the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Action on the open and close minutes from September 22nd, 2020. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Village Board Special Meeting Minutes Approval for October 13th, 2020. All those in favor say aye.
You doing separate motions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Say, say Mary, I did not receive this agenda.
Right.
So can somebody quick send me an email or something with the agenda?
It's on the Ashwabanon website.
Tony, I'll send it to you. We'll. We'll get it sent to you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, I was gonna do the minutes separate. So I need a mo- a motion and a second to approve the village board special meeting minutes for October 13th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Approve the minutes for the special village board meeting for October 15th, 2020.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second to approve those. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state the ni- your name and address. It limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, Rick Rice, 465 Oak Lawn. And I was here last month and. About the animal problem across the street. The dog numbers are down. The traffic is insane. People dropping dogs off day and night. Dogs barking. Running a business out of residential. I had public safety officer over on a Sunday afternoon just to verify what the backyard looked like. I did not see the. Email that she gave to other people, so I don't know what she put in there. But. It's pretty impossible to go back there now and find. What's left from the after the dogs are there because the grass is this, I know. But that's another story. I guess we're pretty much. Resigned to the fact that nothing's gonna happen. This is gonna keep going on. I just hope it doesn't go on in the winter because now we've got problems with cars on the street to come by with. To clean up the leaves. There's cars parked on the street that can't get done. I don't want that done in my front yard. But. I hope, and I got a phone call yesterday. And I told the individual that called me. That if one person can make a decision, like I said last time, that affects eight families because. He thinks it's okay to do that. That's wrong. That stuff should come to the board. And somebody should make a. And, and, and do some investigation in it. I mean, go and look at it, call in the neighbors, say, hey, this is what's gonna happen. I don't know if that's ever gonna happen. I hope not, but I hope nobody else in the village. Has to put up with what we have to put up with every single day, starting at 7:30 in the morning. Doors slamming, dogs barking. Great Danes hanging out of the back. One dog, one kennel the other day, just bellowing and bellowing and bellowing for I don't know how long. My neighbor came out and. Did some yelling. Nothing happened. So can't call public safety because by the time they get there, it's all gonna be over. So I'm just, I'm just hoping that. If anything of this ever comes up again in the village. Somebody's gotta be held responsible for it, and we should not have to live that way in, in a residential area. So that's all I got to say. So hopefully I won't see you guys next month.
Okay.
And like I said, I just hope it doesn't get any worse this winter with the snow plowing and stuff like that, so.
So, thank you for coming again, Rick.
All right.
And I know you, you were here last month and we had some internal discussion on this and we can't comment on it. We can't discuss it.
I know.
But I'm gonna have Aaron call you and.
He called me yesterday.
Yep, and let, we're gonna see if we can get together a meeting and get this issue resolved. So. We'll have, we'll have staff call you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay, anybody else that would like to comment on anything? Okay. We'll move on. The written communications or announcements. The one thing I have to say, and I'm saying this more for the public to hear. We had a lot of rain the other day, and prior to when we got all the rain, I was out. Running some errands in the village, and people are putting their leaves in the gutters, and I wanna ask the people, please do not put your leaves in the gutters. Because when it rains, and especially when it rained, what, three inches of rain, all those leaves go into our sewer system, and they clog up the sewers, and then we end up with flooding, and it, it's not. Luckily, things didn't get that bad this time, but please do not put your leaves. In the gutters. Our crews are out. On our website, Francine made a great app that it tells you exactly where our next pickup is gonna be, when they'll be in your area, and, and just please try to pay attention to that, to put your leaves out so they don't have to be. Too long on your lawn, and please don't put them in the gutters, so. That being said, okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on. Number eight, action on the consent agenda is the action on operator license. The action on election inspector appointments for the 2021. Cycle. I wanna pull that one out, please. Number C, general fund financial report for September of 2020, the investment report. Department reports. And the budgeted expenditures. In the department reports. They've been putting the, the cost of getting rid of the garbage. I asked them to start putting this in, and you can see how high. Some of the, the garbage costs have gone, and a lot of that has to do with COVID. People are home. They're cleaning out their homes and, and. It's, it's gone quite high. So the one, I believe it was the month of May. I think it was like $26,000, so. Lot of money. But anyway, so I need an action on the consent agenda with pulling the election inspector out. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with pulling the election inspector appointments out. Patrick.
You can take a vote on that, and then we'll have a separate vote on the other.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, madam president, for pulling election inspector. Item. We've had a. General amount of citizens who want to participate in next week's election. In addition to that listing that's before you, I have three more. Names I'd like to add to that, thus an amendment. If you would please entertain a motion to amend. The election inspector list by adding the names Jessica Berry, Trevor Ellington, and James Trager.
Vote to approve is presented by Patrick.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the amended inspector appointments for 2020, 21. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Number nine, public hearings. Nine A, public hearing regarding ordinance number O10-1-20. Rezoning 724 Parkview Road Parcel VA-198-1. From I2 Heavy Industry to R2 Two Family Residence. Aaron.
The requested rezoning is, as President Kardowski alluded to, rezoning parcel VA 198-1. From I2 Heavy Industry to R2 Two Family Residence. The property is currently used as a home, and it has been used as a home as far as people can remember. For some reason in the past, this property was zoned I2 Heavy Industry. However, the. People who own the property were going in for a refinancing, and it came up in the title search that it's actually zoned. I2 Heavy Industry. The property to the east and to the south is also all zoned. R2 Two Family Residence. So rezoning this property to R2 Two Family Residence would be consistent with the surrounding land uses. And staff supports the proposed rezoning.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wanna speak for this item? Is there anybody who would like to speak for the rezoning on this item? Anybody like to speak for the rezoning on this item? Okay, I need a motion to close the hearing. People, if they wanna speak against it, but there isn't anybody to speak against it. Okay, I need a motion to, to close the hearing.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Nine B, public hearing regarding ordinance number O9-1-20, amending sections. Four-1-5 Keeping of Livestock and Poultry. Aaron.
The requested amendment to the. Section four-1-5 Keeping of Livestock and Poultry came to our attention from a resident. Who'd like to maintain a chicken coop on their property. In terms of. Staff, we reviewed the ordinance, found a few deficiencies. In terms of how it is. Written as compared to how it's administered. So we saw a few changes that need to be made, particularly changing the distance requirements for neighbor notification. From 100 feet from the parcel line to 100 feet from the chicken coop. Which is much more practical methodology of measuring this as well as notifying the neighbors. So in addition to the 100-foot change, a couple other changes, just to clarify applicable timelines for the permit applications. The maximum number of chicken permits village-wide in the R1 zoning district, and the total number of chickens allowed per permit. So it's really a cleanup of the ordinance.
Okay, is there anybody out here who would like to speak for this amendment? Please state your name and address at the mic, please.
I'm Sarah Friedel, and I live at 2759 Auto Court. So. The way that the ordinance was written before. Makes sense for the majority of. The parcels in our village, which are about a quarter acre on average. Maybe half acre. And I almost have, I live in the village and have a piece of land that's almost two acres. And. I have lots of positive feedback from all my neighbors. In the keeping of chickens on my property. But what happens is. I have such a big amount of space that my coop can be set back in my yard to be far enough away from my neighbors. This might not be the case. All over, but if we measure from the coop, then we've got. A good. Idea of distance between our, our neighbors and the, where the chickens actually are located. To the neighbor's property as opposed to from the property line, which is, for me. 160 feet just to the front of my yard. So. In order to get to my neighbor's house. 200 feet. So having our, the coop measured instead of the property line as the form of measurement to have the coop. Seems to. Help me out and make more sense. In our neighborhood. I've got some people right across the street that are so far from the coop that are opposed. To signing. My, my sign-off to allow this to happen. And. I think that they wouldn't sign anything. Even if I asked them to sign to have a dog or children for that matter, but they just. So. They're so far away that I, I don't see that it should matter. This rewrite would kind of. Make more sense for somebody with a, and take into account somebody with a big piece of property like I do.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak for this? Is there anybody out there who would like to speak against? The amendment for the livestock and poultry? Anybody else who would like to speak against this? Okay, need a motion to close the hearing?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion, uh, hearing is closed. Nine C, public hearing regarding ordinance number O10-2-20, repealing and replacing certain sections of Ashwabanan Municipal Code. Chapter 17, Article 5, Density, Intensity, and Dimensional Standards. Aaron.
The requested amendment is actually staff-initiated for the proposal. What we found as a result of COVID-19 is the number of people. A number of residents within the village of Ashwabanan are adding on to their homes, whether it's home additions, pools. Sheds, patios, whatever it might be. They're running into issues in terms of our dimensional standards with the, as they're currently set up. Whether it's impervious surface requirements, furniture requirements, so on so forth. We looked at this as an opportunity to, I guess, streamline. The dimensional standards a little bit as well as so address the impervious surface requirements and issues that we're coming up against. Creating more consistency among the different zoning classifications. And creating a. A more, I guess, administratively enforceable ordinance. So the requested changes are again meant to create better flexibility for the residents in terms of how they can. Improve the value of their homes.
Okay, is there anybody out there that would like to speak for this ordinance?
I should mention the Realtors Association Northeast Wisconsin did send a letter requesting that they be notified, identified as in support of the changes.
Thank you. Anybody out there who would like to speak for this? Anybody out there who would like to speak against this? Anybody out there who'd like to speak against this? Need a motion to close the hearing, please?
Move to close the hearing.
Motion and a second to close the hearing.
Who's the second, please?
Trustee Williams. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, we're at action items. Ten A, action regarding ordinance number O10-1-20, rezoning 724 Parkview Road. Parcel VA-198-1 from I2 Heavy Industry to R2 Two Family Residence.
Being in the planning committee, we hashed this out. It's a, just a long-term mistake that should have been taken care of a long time ago. Move to approve the ordinance. Zero 10-1-20.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number zero 10-1-20. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten B, action regarding ordinance number O9-1-20, amending sections of four-1-5 Keeping of Livestock and Poultry. You all heard what this was about? When we first did this ordinance, I was on the board then. It was brought, it was brought to our attention from a gentleman, and he, he lives down by the river. And.
The van?
No. He does not live in.
I had to.
He lived on Early Street. Anyway. So we, we just kinda, kinda did the ordinance, and we now found out that there's some properties that. That it just doesn't fit, so.
This makes sense, and I would make a motion to approve.
I agree, second.
Are you seconding that, Allison?
Yeah, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number O9-1-20. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Ten C, action regarding ordinance number O10-2-20, repealing and replacing certain sections. Of Ashwabanan Municipal Code, Chapter 17, Article 5, Density, Intensity, and Dimensional Standards.
Again, that's gone through planning committee, uh, commission. I'll move to approve. Ordinance O10-2-20.
I'll second that. I've had. Two, actually three, but two real recent residents in my area that have. Have been stalled from doing home, home improvement because I'm, because of kind of the. The, the, the way this was, worded two different ways, so I'm glad we're cleaning this up, and they're really gonna appreciate that, too.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ten D, action to amend license premise description, T. Bacon's BBQ LLC, DBA, T. Bacon's BBQ.
Tom and Jennifer Bacon, owners of T. Bacon's, 2052 Holmgren. Request to amend their license, premise description. To allow the selling of beer and wine for outdoor events. Before you is a layout. Public Safety has looked at this. No issues per se. The Bacon's are not available this evening. To speak in their behalf, but no issues from the Office of the Clerk Treasurer. And this, by the way, was approved unanimously at Public Works in Protection.
Being in the Public Works Committee, I'll approve. The amended. Where do we got here? License premise description for TJ Bacon.
Second. We have a motion and a second to amend the license premise description for T. Bacon's BBQ LLC. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Ten E, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Krista Joost.
Before use of communication from Krista Joost, who is appealing her denied operator's license application. Also, along in the packet are letters of reference from various individuals. Ms. Joost is in attendance. And also she has a supervisor with her if you decide to suspend the rules for interest of the parties to speak. The appeal was approved at Public Works in Protection on a three-to-one vote.
Okay. Did anybody wanna hear? Open the floor.
And she is here to speak on her behalf.
Yeah, so I was here. I was at Public Works. I don't have a problem opening the floor if the rest of the village would like to hear it, or the board, but. I don't know.
Is that a motion to open the floor?
I'm wondering if the rest of the board would like to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to open the floor.
One second.
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second to open the floor for Krista Joost. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. If you'd like to state your name and address, please, for the record.
Krista Joost, address is 2703 Haas Road in Kokona. And I guess I'm here, I went for my renewal. For here, because I moved from Anduzy's to D2 Sports Pub. I got denied because from what was understood, my previous. I wrote it down the wrong way. I had a felony from 10 years ago. I wrote it down the wrong way. I guess I just assumed that it was gonna be looked up anyways because there was something written down. I've. Had it for Ashwabanan. I had zero issues. I have been bartending since I've had my felony in multiple different counties. I've never had to fight for it. So I guess I took it for granted that I wasn't going to have to come before a committee to. Come and fight for it. When I got the letter saying that I wasn't going to get it. And I called him. I had. Old bosses immediately writing me letters within minutes. I sent them to Patrick. I had no issues. I. Had a speeding ticket since then. I've done my probation free and clear. I. Again, this is the way I feed my family, like. I'm just begging for you guys to please turn this over back.
You said Krista that this was a renewal. How long have you had a bartender's license in Ashwabanan?
I had it for two years. And then when the two years was over is when I switched over to D2. And nothing has happened since then, ever. So then when I went to renew it, they denied it, so.
Okay. Seeing that Krista's supervisor made the effort also to come in, would you like to also speak?
Robert Soick, 4910, Founders Terrace, Hobart, Wisconsin. I'm just here more to talk about Krista's character. I met her at Stating View one year ago. I'm sorry, Stating View, Anduzy's. One year ago on Thanksgiving, got to know her. Saw that she was a leader. She was a key holder at Anduzy's. The way that she commanded respect from her. Other, you know, employees, customers. You don't see that in this business very often. Usually, you know, we're, D2 doesn't, we don't have bouncers. Our bartenders are the ones who are in charge, and she commands that charge. She's someone who's always there to work. She's on time. She'll pick up shifts. She wants to feed her family. She. I get she had some issues in the past, but I believe she's moved past those. I have no problem leaving. Every bit of responsibility in her hands. I was just out of town. She was my closing bartender every night that I was out of town. She's a hard worker, and I just feel that she should get the opportunity to keep on working in the village. I mean, this is a great place to work. Obviously, we have a lot of events. There's a lot of money to be made in this, in this area, so. Just would like you guys to give her, give her another chance.
Does anyone have any questions for Krista or the, her supervisor? Move to close the public, or the floor? Is that what I said? Move to close the floor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The floor is closed. Okay, now we'll hear from the chief.
All right, this was brought up in the.
The chief was gonna talk.
Pardon?
The chief was gonna talk.
I was gonna have, hear from the chief.
Oh, I, that's where I was gonna go with this, too. We, we had a three-to-one vote. We wanted to bring it to the board, just get their feeling on it, so. My next question was, chief, we want to hear your comments.
So, you know, as the new guy coming in, things probably don't work as smoothly as they used to, so. Just to give the board a little bit of background, when I look at these, I have a set of guidelines that I look at. One of those guidelines is have they had a felony conviction in the last 10 years? This one technically wasn't within 10 years. As it's now over 10 years, but that was the reason for the denial, as well as the seriousness of the offense. That was listed here, so. She indicated that she didn't put it down correctly. That's true. She didn't indicate exactly what it was. She had possession. It was possession with intent. To deliver, so the charge wasn't quite accurate, so just based on that, that is the reason for my denial. As I said in the committee meeting, I didn't get to have a discussion. As I said in the committee meeting, I didn't get to have a discussion with Krista about this, didn't get to hear the story that she has or a supervisor coming in, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of why and how I make those decisions, and I try to apply those equally and fairly to everyone when I look at these applications. A lot of people don't realize how much responsibility there is at being a bartender, and so I take those very seriously when I look at these, and so that's the reason for the denial based on the application that I reviewed.
And secondly, so we did vote to overturn the appeal. We did also have a discussion that at our next Public Works and Protection meeting, we're going to kind of bring forth, do we alter our application, do we potentially provide, you can see here, it says, have you ever been arrested or convicted? Maybe provide a little bit more parameter to the application, so hopefully it's pretty clear what needs to be listed, so that will be at our next Public Works meeting, that we're looking at how we can better call it out, I guess. So I was in favor of it at Public Works, so I will make a motion to approve the appeal for Krista Joost. I'm approving the appeal, right? Okay. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, just a comment on that, you know, we take our.
We need a second before we. Discuss, does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Now we can have discussion.
Yes.
You know, we take our department head's recommendations very seriously, and in this case, we're, we're taking in additional information, and with that, you know, this was a very serious situation, it sounds like you've turned the corner and we certainly hope you stay on that, 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 in that direction. And, but everyone makes a mistake at some point in time, so with that, I would, I would support that, the appeal.
Okay.
Well, as I said, one little slip and it will be revoked, so I hope you're well aware of that. I believe in second chances, but, you know, we go through this every time we get this application here. The chief recommends no, the board says yes. I mean, come on, that's, that's what we're here for, to make those decisions, but I still respect the chief and what he says.
Yeah, and to kind of piggyback off of that, we have had a lot of situations where, you know, we potentially do the opposite of what's been done, and I think if we clarify this process and hopefully really call it out, I hope, I hope to not see as many reversals in the future, because to not list something, I'm hoping that not listing something is very apparent. If we change the application to list this and someone doesn't list it, well, it was pretty clear what you were expected to do, you know? So I, I just know since I've been on the board, we've had a lot of situations like that, so hoping to kind of amend the process and, and, you know, go from there, and like the chief said, when he denies or, you know, makes his decisions, he doesn't have all the information that we now have when we're making these decisions, so hoping we can kind of improve upon our process and go from there.
Yeah, I wouldn't look upon this as a reversal, I'd look upon this as a clarification and new and better information, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appeal the denied operator's license.
To approve.
To approve.
The appeal.
Right. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. F, Action Regarding the Element Building Three Development Agreement with Element Three LLC. Aaron.
Okay, the requested development agreement with the Element LLC is for building three of the, the Element apartment complex. Building three was previously approved through the site plan review process, and the development agreement was reviewed and kind of gone through a number of times previously by the board. This is being brought to you for the formal review and approval for the development agreement, which would include a $1.7 million tax increment financing incentive in exchange for a projected assessed value of 8.8 million, or increment of 7.831 million. Element Three LLC will guarantee for a period of 20 years the minimum increment and include a 1.5% annual increase in value over time as described in the agreement. If you have any questions regarding the agreement, I'm happy to answer those questions for you.
And none? I feel like we've seen this about six times.
Correct.
Yeah, seeing that we've reviewed this multiple times in closed session, this is not our first time looking at it, I would make a motion to approve the proposed development agreement with Element Three LLC for the Element Building Number Three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Element Three Building Development Agreement with Element Three LLC. Any discussion?
So this basically is a continuation of past agreements we've had in the same, same sort of venue then?
That's exactly correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Ten G, Action on Audit Services Contract. Greg Wenhols.
Alden Station, you missed that one.
Addition.
I don't have the addition. I don't have the addition. Do you have the addition?
Hey, join, pardon?
Okay. I'm sorry. Ten G, Request by Redoo Homes for a boat dock on the Fox River at Alden Station. Aaron. Sorry about that, Aaron.
No, that's perfectly fine.
In my packet.
There's been a lot going on tonight. We received a request from Redoo Homes, who is our partner in the development of the Alden Station development on the former Schneider site along the river, for, I guess, cooperation in trying to place a boat dock for use by the homeowners association on the Fox River at that location. It's a little more complicated than would typically be involved for a boat dock due to the loca, due to the issue of, the village actually owns Outlet Five, which basically follows the course of the river for the entire length of the Alden Station development. So there's some coordination and cooperation, as well as approvals that we need to obtain from the DNR before any kind of boat dock could go in. The boat dock itself would be permitted, constructed, maintained, all costs from Redoo Homes and/or the Alden Station Homeowners Association. The boat dock would have to go in after the proposed pedestrian bridge, we're looking to connect Alden Station to Ashwabane Park, because we want to make sure that this boat dock doesn't become kind of a hang-up for the bridge. What Redoo Homes is asking for really is just a, a formal authorization of cooperation as we move forward on, on trying to get this to happen. As you can see in the recommendation, the motion to approve, we basically commit to working together, conditioned upon DNR approval for the boat dock.
With the boat dock, are you looking at one dock, or would there be multiple docks?
They're probably, it'd probably be similar to Bay Harbor, where there's one dock going off with a couple slips off of it.
And would it, do you have any idea on the positioning, or is that, like, because there's gonna be a pool house, or like a, would it be kind of in central area to that, or is it slightly dependent on what the DNR approves?
It's really dependent on what the DNR will allow us to do. The DNR did approve with, with Rex's leadership, those fish cribs that were out there off of the point of Ashwabane Park, so we want to make sure that whatever goes out there doesn't disturb those or create any issues for those as well. So it, really, it's gonna involve a lot of cooperation with the DNR to see this happen.
Is there gonna be boat ramps along with these docks, or is it just docks?
Just docks. It'd be similar to Bay Harbor.
Okay.
Aaron, I don't have a problem on moving forward with this, as long as we get our prob, not a problem, but our, our bridge across the river to get over to the park. We do want to see Alden Station become a very success for the village in itself, so we, I'd be more than happy to work with them, so, do you need a, any emotion, motion on this, Aaron?
What I'd probably ask is a, a motion as identified in the recommendation on the staff report. I realize it's a little lengthy, but I wanted to kind of cover all of our bases on that.
So moved with all the verbiage.
Do we need to read all, or can we just say?
Let me give it, let me give it a try. A move forward, make a, a motion to move forward with the DNR to get a permit to continue looking at possibly putting in docks after we, how do I say this? After we finalize our project, building a bridge over the river to the park.
I guess what I could probably do is just read the, the language I kind of put in the, the staff report.
Right.
Just kind of, that way you cover all of our bases.
I can read it if you want, Gary.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, the village and Redoo Homes commit to working together to obtain permits for a Fox River dock for usage by the Alden Station Homeowners Association members, if allowable under state and federal regulations. Any and all costs associated with the permitting, construction, and installation of such a pier shall be borne by Redoo Homes. Any and all costs associated with maintenance of such a pier shall be borne by the Alden Station Homeowners Association or Redoo Homes. The dock process and location are subject to WDNR review and approval.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, sir.
Could you repeat that, Gary?
Uh, yeah.
I've got a question. Being that that's on our property, village property, how do we make sure that it's being maintained properly, and then off of that, is there a possibility that we can incur any risk if something happens there, somebody falling off or injuring themselves? Because it is our.
Yeah, I had that same question about liability. I had that same question, Chris, about liability, that'd be my only concern.
So at, at this point, we're really, it's kind of an exploratory phase. I think what happens is, if we get to a point where the DNR says, yes, you can do this, that's when you figure out those fine details as far as liability, who actually owns it, so on so forth. What I'd like to do is basically is take us out of the equation completely, and just, it's all Redoo Homes or Alden Station, but it's kind of, once we get that approval from the DNR, that, then we can hit those brass tacks and hammer those issues out. You can certainly bring it back to the board at that point before moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
I also have a question, I'm sorry, in regard to the bridge. If that needs to be stated specifically in here, that is a huge project and that needs to be location, located, I realize WDNR has, or WDNR has a big say in that, but I think listing that in the motion would be important, because that's a big factor in where the location of those piers are for that development.
Sure, I think that makes perfect sense to say it, you know, additional sentence that the pier happens after completion of the pedestrian bridge.
Do you want me to amend my motion?
You want to amend your motion to that?
Okay, so I'll amend my motion for the last sentence to read, the dock process and location are subject to WDNR review and approval after the review and approval of the pedestrian bridge? Is that sufficient?
Probably after the construction.
After the construction of the pedestrian bridge.
Okay, does the second also approve of that?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I have one further question, Mary, then it's probably to Rex. Rex, on those fish cribs and that, do we need to protect them from where this dock might be?
I, yes, we would. We would need to make sure, and this is with the DNRs, this is what Aaron alluded to before, working with the DNR, once the bridge goes in, it's really gonna be up to the DNR and Fish and Wildlife, because I know the DNR will consult with Fish and Wildlife, they were the ones that supplied the grant money, grant funding to put the fish cribs in, so they're gonna want to make sure that any, any dock or motorized boat activity in the area do not disturb or come too near that fairly large project that was just put in.
Yeah, that was my concern, because I know that there was a lot of money spent there, and I'm just concerned all of a sudden a dock shows up there. If the DNR is gonna be on the hook to make sure that's gonna happen, I guess I'm okay with that.
Aaron, ultimately, you'll be bringing back an, an addendum to the agreement with Redoo, then specifically identify all the specifics, correct?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, now, action on audit services contract. Great.
Now the exciting stuff, everyone's favorite topic, auditing. So just to give a quick review for Jay and Tracy, last month, I came to the board asking for the ability to piggyback off of a joint audit, RFP, done by the city of Green Bay, the Green Bay Water Utility and Green Bay Transit. We have been having some issues with, with auditing over the last couple of years, as some other communities have in the area, and I was calling them to ask if they would be, consider helping or doing some kind of joint RFP, and they had just started the process, so solving the Tony, the ability to piggyback was an option, and what that meant was let them go through the audit RFP, and then based on their decision, we could then choose to accept that, that candidate, and then work out our own terms or not, and just go back, back to, back to zero and do our own RFP. So their results came in, and their selection was Baker Tilly, and quite, quite a big difference. They scored twenty, twenty percent higher than everybody else, three out of four of their categories, Baker Tilly was number one. So they did an extensive review with, with different leadership within those organizations, and that's what they came out with. I would, I'm asking tonight that we would move forward and do that. I did work with Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly, excuse me, they drafted up a, a proposal, and at the end of the day, I added a scope of service a little bit more than we have today. I included reporting of the CAFR, the state report, the PSC, and MDNA, which are all very time-consuming reporting mechanisms, which I would normally work hand-in-hand with the auditing, a lot of back and forth. It would allow us to be a little bit more efficient, let them use the tools they have to produce those reports internally. So the contract bid for us comes in at thirty-nine thousand two hundred. We budgeted thirty-four thousand in the past, and portions of that go to utilities, because they audit utility work as well. So it's an additional fifty-two-hundred dollars, however, those added services for reporting are over eight thousand in their bid, so in essence, they're actually less for the dollar-for-dollar service they're getting, their, their hourly rate. So they are honoring us with the same discounted rate that they gave through that bid, which is thirty-five percent of their standard rate, and we're locking in for five years at that rate. They are one of the well-respected throughout the state, they have many, many clients, I've, I've met some of the people over the years, very, very professional, so I'm very happy that that was the, the selection. So I'm, I'm asking for you, part of the reason why I wanted to add those services, we're doing a little bit internally, some, some shifting of duties with the treasurer work and the clerk job, I'll be taking on more treasurer work next year as it is, and so that would help me free up a little bit of time in that space, and, and be quite honest, over the years, just the workload has slowly creeped up like a lot of places. I think it's the time to allow them to use their expertise and their tools, their electronic tools help produce those reports quicker. And the last advantage to Baker Tilly is, if you recall, we just added a new, we're doing, going to a new financial software system, which is owned by Baker Tilly, so all the more economies of scale using that tool to help with, with everything we're doing. So the recommendation, which is much shorter than the last one, is to approve the contract agreement with Baker Tilly, authori, and authorizing village staff to finalize those terms, but at the, the cost of thirty-nine thousand two hundred.
Any questions?
And that's fixed for five years then, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Baker Tilly and authorize the village staff to finalize the contract terms as laid out.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Baker Tilly for $39,200 and authorize the village staff to finalize contract items as laid out above. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Request to use park development funds in 2020. Rex.
What you have in front of you is a request to use $4,000 of park development fund to enhance the trail, which is looping around the Ashwabenan Sports Complex. Currently, a trail that we have goes to the backside of the complex. If you are out there on any given day, you'll see a lot of people are looping around the whole exterior of the park, cutting through the softball complex. With the acreage of that park, it's primed to extend and enhance some of the trails that are in the park. So what I'd like to do with that, and we still have a good couple of weeks to take care of it before the snow flies and the ground freezes up too much, is to push that trail from the backside of the softball complex, loop it around to the south, over to the restroom shelter area that's also in the park. That would make a full circuitous loop, you're cutting through the section, that section of the park. It is in the 2020 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, or it's identified as a project this year. We just didn't know if we were going to be able to get to it. We still think we can do it. Therefore, the request is before you. Staff would dig out four inches of dirt. That soil would actually be transferred then to Argon Park to fill in the depression in the Argon Park soccer field, crown that a little bit, which will help out with the general overall drainage over there. So it would be a win-win in that situation. We wouldn't have to worry about what we're going to do with the additional soils.
Any discussion on using park development funds for this?
I think it's a good opportunity to use those dollars. For some reason, a couple of weeks ago, I was down in there taking a look at the soccer fields and just reminiscing about years past, and I looked down in there, wow, that's a lot of area there. What could we do with that area? And then this came forward. So I think this makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, you know, there's another thing, too. One of our park maintenance staff just came up with the idea as well, which was certainly an easy project for next year, coming up on that. There's a lot of what area to the west where the farmer's fields, which are owned by the airport drains into that area. And if we're going to make this a more of a walking trail, he suggested he's put in a number of, in his previous job before working for Ashwabenan, put in a number of butterfly gardens, and we thought with a lot of natural plants and flowers and different attractions, such as that, we thought that might be another step, you know, to do, you know, in the future. Just saying, there's a vision there of what's going to happen going around, and this is one way to make that loop, so people can enjoy some of those things that we're still looking at.
Okay. So entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of using, to recommend park development funds be used for this project. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Action on CARES Act Dollars for School Districts. Greg.
So I think most of you are aware, Jay and Tracy, if you're not, that the state provided through the CARES Act, routes to recovery, funds for municipalities and school districts throughout the state back in March-April timeframe. The village was allotted $274, $427. Those funds are to be used to help offset expenditures related to the COVID pandemic, so PPE, sanitizer, other types of equipment. It can also be used for time for public safety, emergency worker, those types of things that's unbudgeted, if you will. The village right now is in a position to, could use all those funds, and it's a big reason why we're going to be able to balance the budget this year. However, there has been a push by a lot of the school districts across the state, asking their funding mechanisms are a little bit different, and they're incurring, I think, a little bit more costs around, you know, the virtual learning and things like that. So Ashwabenan School District and the West Apier School District both reached out to the village, asking, hey, if you have any funds available, we would certainly appreciate anything. Mary came, and we talked about this, and although we could use the funds, we felt it would still be something nice to do. It may not seem like a lot of money, but I did talk to both school districts, and they're extremely appreciative of anything that we can do. So what we're asking is the village board to authorize us to, we have to actually make the purchase for them, and then they get the goods, but $10,000 worth of goods for Ashwabenan School District and $2,500 for West Apier. The reason the difference is they're trying to just allocate it based on their equalized value within the village. So if it'd be okay, I'm recommending that we purchase COVID-related items and $10,000 for Ashwabenan School District and $2,500 for the school district of West Apier.
Greg.
So Greg, are you talking PPE stuff? Are you talking technology things? What are, is the school district giving you any guidance as to where it's going to go?
Yes. I talked to Keith Lucius. They have, they're looking at different technology needs as well as PPE. So he's got a, he's already got something lined up and was hoping, they had approached us probably two months ago, asking, and so they already had some things lined up, hoping that we'd be able to get something for them. West Apier School District is looking at specifically getting more technology, I think some real basic iPads for their grade school kids who need virtual learning, so they're able to buy whatever they can get out of that. So very appreciative of that. So, yeah, they'll give me, they'll send me the invoices, and then I'll just pay them through the village. That's how it has to be done legally.
All right. You answered my question, Greg.
Greg, I think a lot of other municipalities are doing similar things, I believe, to help out school districts.
Yeah, they are. They're trying to help in some capacity, so.
Okay.
I would assume the CARES Act requires certain items to be purchased, or certain things have to be purchased, and I'm sure what they're asking for would meet that criteria.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be an issue for the village.
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take some of our CARES Act dollars for the school district, $10,000 for the Ashwabenan School District, $2,500 for the West Apier School District, to purchase items for them. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Any items for next agenda? Give the office a call. We'll get it on the agenda, and we're now, Patrick.
Closed session items during the meeting. The village board of the village of Ashwabenan may convene into closed session pursuant to A) Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding parcels VA-56-4-1 and tax incremental districts 3 and 5 where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B) Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851C for the purpose of possible discussion and action on village manager vacancy and considering the employment, compensation, or performance evaluation data of village manager over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. C) Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851F for the purpose of possible discussion and action on village manager vacancy and the financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where per ends B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
Trustee Kabaki.
Yes.
Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Okay. Can I use the restroom before we start?
Jeremy, can I just close out now?
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Now I can? Stop recording?
Talking about that, can we just call him maybe?
Can you just call him?
We just, that's kind of what Mary and I were just talking about, unless there's another way that you can think of that would be-
Can I stop? Can I stop recording?
Yeah.